All right, so I believe we're probably at the 1800 hour. We will go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Plaatsville Planning Commission for the date of July 17, 2018 to order. If you'd all be kind enough to join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Can we go ahead and have the roll call, please?
Member Keeney.
Here.
Member Jubba.
Here.
Chair Friend.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Member Saragosa.
Here.
Thank you. We have a rare occurrence of all five members here, which is exciting. Gives us some other opportunities, perhaps. First item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Chair would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda and the minutes of the regular meeting from June 19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? Chair sees none. Nothing is pulled from the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman, prior to moving on to item number two, staff would like to respond to a question that was raised at your last staff meeting regarding public comment on agendized items. So this was a member of the public that wanted to make comments to statements that were made by either commissioners or staff on typically what is the last item on our agenda, and that's matters from the commission and staff. So staff did consult with council, and council basically felt that an argument could be made that senses a non-action item, that you can, we can say there's no public comment. But staff agreed with council that we should err on allowing more public participation in the process. So we should allow, I guess was the conclusion of our discussion, to allow members of the public to comment on that item matters from commissioners and staff. But council did caution that since the specific items are not agendized, there should not be a discussion. So it's not a back and forth, it's not a Q and A, and it needs to be precisely a comment on either a report given by a commissioner or a report given by the staff, nothing else. Anything else, then, should have been brought up under the open forum, or what we would call under item three, written communication or oral communication, which is typically the invitation for the public to provide any comments to the commission on items that are not on the agenda.
Terrific, I appreciate that. Thank you, Pierre. Two thoughts come to me immediately. One, in our bylaws, we describe meeting procedure, and it just occurs to me that perhaps we need to make, we should at least review the bylaws with regards to that and see if we need to make mention that the public may have the opportunity to speak on these things. So I don't have any language for that, and I don't have the bylaws in front of me, fortunately. So we won't go down that road tonight, but I do think we'll have to look at that. The other part of the issue, if I remember correctly, is that we had an item that was agendized, and then it was, we, it was pulled or postponed. And the public member also felt that since it was on the agenda, even though we weren't going to address the item, that because it's on the agenda and they showed up, that the public needs to have the opportunity to comment. So I might request that you take that back to council and have them review that part of it as well. So I think there were two pieces to the question.
Yeah, typically, the public does have the ability to comment.
Oh, okay.
But again, there would be no back and forth, but the commission can hear comments from the public to an item that was on the agenda, that came to the meeting, expected to be able to speak to that item. You can certainly permit them to speak, especially in some cases where they might not be able to make at the next meeting that the item was continued to.
Correct. So again, that's important in terms of a meeting procedure, that would be important to know, so that even though we've pulled an item, the chair still needs to acknowledge the public, any member of the public that wants to comment on this item still has the opportunity to get their comments into the record. Okay, I think it's important for us to know, so for your future chairs, up and coming. All right, thank you very much for that. Then item three, this is items of interest to the public, public comment. These are for items that are not on our agenda this evening. Your council, the commission can take no action on these items, and it will be limited to three minutes. So anyone in the audience that wishes to bring forth an item or an issue that is not on our agenda for this evening? All right, seeing none. We do have written communication, but it's relevant to item 4.2?
4.1 and 4.2.
4.1 and 4.2. Do I have the 4.1? Oh, yes, I do. You're right, absolutely, I do. Okay, terrific. Well, then, I go ahead, that moves us then to item 4.1. This is a project at 3094 Cedar Ravine Road. Site plan review, 9807. It's a revision to the master sign plan. Andrew, I believe you have the staff report on this?
Yeah, that's correct. The request would replace an existing non-illuminated ground sign for the professional office building located at 3094 Cedar Ravine. The new sign would have a painted rust brown redwood support posts with black decorative caps and an aluminum support cover with beige text coat finish to match the professional building. Tenant sign boards would consist of painted MDO, or medium density overlay, which is a type of plywood. The site is located within the Cedar Ravine Residential Historic District and has its own classification of R3H, which is a medium density multifamily residential zone historic district. The building is single-story with approximately 1,200 square feet of floor area. The Eldorado County assessor records estimate its construction year back to 1896. Professional offices within the city's multifamily zones are conditional. The conversion of a single-family residence into a office use requires site plan review under our Site Plan Review Section 1049. Back in August of 1998, the commission approved a request by the property owner at the time for a conditional use permit and site plan review to convert the existing single-family home into a business professional office building containing four offices, as well as onsite parking. In October of that same year, the planning commission approved a ground sign for site tenants, as well as site landscaping. The applicant's submittal package was provided to you, and it's made part of the staff report as Attachment A. Signs are a component of the sign plan review approval process, subject to the design criteria under Site Plan Review Section 1049, as well as the sign regulations of 10417 of City Code. This request is before the commission because it involves replacing an existing ground sign for the business professional office building with a new sign. Staff analyzed the signed request and found that the new sign meets the site plan review design criteria of complementary appearance with the architecture of the existing building. The sign scale is adequate for tenant and address identification. Proposed sign materials are durable and close resemble those of the office building, as well as proposed colors match those of the office building onsite. The ground sign and sign structure comply with the city's regulations and City Code requirements and criteria of sign height, width, and sign area for ground signs within a non-commercial zone. Figure one on page five of staff's report is the conditions of record for site plan review and conditional use permit, again, approved back in 1998. Attachment B of staff's report is an excerpt of the approved front yard landscaping and irrigation plan for that site plan review. All of the conditions have been met, however, a visit to the site revealed that the front yard is not landscaped as approved. Two conditions at the top of page five of staff's report would address this issue. Number one, require the owner to install the front landscaping within six months of approval of tonight's request. And number two, record a landscape maintenance agreement to ensure ongoing maintenance of the plants and irrigation. Owner Representative Kathy Schulte contacted staff after receiving the staff report and agenda for tonight's hearing. Ms. Schulte mentioned wanting to change the landscape plan for the site. She has presented tonight to staff, and I made copies available to, or she made copies available for all of you to review, so she has amendments to the landscape plan for the site. You know, pending planning commission's consideration of the changes that are before you on the landscape plan, staff recommends approval of the sign request. Ms. Schulte is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Andrew. Before I open it up to commissioners for questions of staff, I'll make the quaint observation that I lived in this house for about four years, from 19...
Wow.
1984 to 1988. I will say it looks to be in substantially better repair than when I inhabited it at the time. So I was just curious. I saw the pictures, wait a minute, I saw the address, but oh, yes. All right.
I don't think that would disqualify you, five, from you to participate in tonight's discussion.
I hope not. All right, so any questions of staff by commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Keeney?
Excuse me, the landscape maintenance agreement, would that have to, was that required to be with a professional maintenance company, or is this something that, because it is more of a drought tolerant kind of landscaping, could they do it themselves?
It's, the agreement is a recorded document. It's an agreement between the city and the property owner. It becomes a restriction placed on the title. It requires that the landscaping be maintained as approved by this body, or upon appeal, city council. So it is typically a requirement, and I do not know why, back in 1998, we did not require it, but I think Chair Friend could probably remember that even during your tenure here, that has been a requirement, at least since the early 2000s, requiring a landscape agreement. But I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just trying to, maybe you remember that.
Well, I think the commissioner's question was, does it require a certified professional to do it, as opposed to can they do it themselves? I don't, and I don't know...
As long as the intent of keeping it up to standard is met, then no, we do not care...
For the record, this predates me.
Okay.
Not by much, but it does predate me, and we can talk about that, I suppose.
No, that answers my concern.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
I was just concerned of requiring more expense, if it's a small lot, if it's something that they can do themselves, but the agreement is just that it will be maintained.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question. Commissioner List?
My question is, because we got this at the start of the meeting, is Emerald Carpet Manzanita on our list of...
Yes.
Okay.
Very drought tolerant.
You just turned your mic to back on.
Native area.
Okay. Any other questions of staff by commissioners? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll invite the applicant to come forward if they're interested in sharing a little bit more about their project, if you're not obligated to.
Oh, wow. I will anyway.
Great.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Schulte, and I'm the owner of the building, just since February, actually. I wasn't even aware that there was a landscaping plan that was to be adhered to, but it was my intention to improve the front landscaping anyway, not knowing there was a plan. The, as I've stated, the plant that was a part of the plan, the boxwood, is too tall for the new sign. That plant will grow to be three feet tall, which would have been okay for the old sign, but the new sign is very low to the ground, and the Emerald Carpet Manzanita is much, much lower, and is more appropriate. Also, the lawn that is shown in the original landscaping plan, to me, doesn't make sense since we're in the drought situation that we're in, and my suggestion is to plant more Emerald Carpet Manzanita in the space that the lawn would be in. That is all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Questions of the applicant? All right, we have a question. Commissioner?
The original SPR from 1998, there's section F7, requires installation of a headlight barrier along the property lines, where lights may shine into the adjacent dwellings. Is the boxwood part of that barrier, given its height?
No, the boxwood was proposed to be planted on the site side of the sidewalk that fronts this particular building and site frontage along Cedar Ravine. The boxwood was to be planted in kind of a linear fashion along the backside of that sidewalk. It was not, as far as I can tell from the site plan, landscape plan, it was not intended to be used as that screen material.
Thank you. So I'd like to follow up on that question, though. This is the first that I've seen a headlight barrier. I kind of understand the premise. So Cedar Ravine is a major arterial for us, right? And so I don't believe that we can be really concerned about traffic on. And you could probably have a seat if you'd like.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other questions. Let me, before I engage that, I'll wait till I bring it back. Were there any more other questions of the applicant?
I can respond to what typically is a screen for headlining.
Yes, yes, but how I'm gonna, how I'd like to run, I'll bring that back under further discussion. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing, and then if I may, I'd just like to pick up on that, on the barrier, because it seems to me that the headlight barrier is intended, in this case, for the driveway, it can't really be for Cedar Ravine.
I believe it's intended for the parking area to the rear of the building.
Okay.
And the adjoining residential uses that are on either side of the parking area. I believe that was the intent. I was not here during 1998, but if you think about it, when a car pulls into a parking stall at the back of that site, their headlights would be facing the neighboring properties. And so I think the intent was to screen those headlights, not the driveway lights coming up or down the driveway, or turning into the site. I think it was meant just for those turning movements within the internal parking lot for the site, to avoid having light spillage onto the neighboring property.
Right, and that's really affecting the property to the south, I believe, the one residence there. All right. I don't know that we need to engage that in any more depth than we have, but it was a good catch. All right, discussion thoughts by commissioners on the requests this evening? All right. I think I'm satisfied personally with the selection, the substitution for the boxwood. The plant is on, is on the list, it makes perfect sense, as well as the modification to the lawn component, as addressed.
I think it's a good, a good modification to the original.
The sign appears to be attractive. Chair would entertain a motion. Yes. Go ahead. Let me go ahead and make sure I have it all correct here. While you're doing that, I have one more question for staff. I noticed that in, when the applicant came to the podium, she was unaware of the landscaping agreement, and I'm just wondering if these kinds of things are supposed to follow along with the title? So when a new owner purchases the property, somehow they're aware, aside from extra studious work necessarily on their part, that these conditions exist? And this is a commercial endeavor, if it wasn't a commercial endeavor, it'd be a different situation, but do you know if there should be considered part of title?
Well, I've heard of jurisdictions that have, on the resolutions that local governments may approve from time to time, I've heard that other jurisdictions actually go and record those with the county recorder's office of the county in which that jurisdiction's located. What that does is it, in a sense, it would put that on the title.
Yeah.
In this particular case, for some reason, back in 98, we did not have a landscape maintenance agreement as part of the approval process. We want to rectify that tonight, and that's why the suggested condition tonight is to include that as one of the components. So that would become part of title when the property changes hands. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it kind of does. It does. All right, you ready for a motion?
Yes, I reckon, I... Thank you, Commissioner. I'll make a motion that we approve SPR 98-07 for 3094 Cedar Ravine Road, and we do that with staff recommendations listed as numbers one and two on page five of the staff report, and items, Roman numerals one, two, and three on page six and seven of the staff report, and also an inclusion that the ground covering be, included the Emerald Carpet Manzanita as opposed to the boxwood, as part of the landscape maintenance agreement.
My second. Motion second. Chair will entertain discussion. Commissioner?
No.
Nope?
Staff does have a question about the motion. Would, would the commissioner, would it be your opinion that the landscape plan as submitted by Kathy Schulte this evening serve as the landscape plan for at least the front yard to meet that additional comment regarding changing the boxwood to the Manzanita?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about the long wind.
Yeah, no, no, that's, yes, that would, I can guess that we accept Ms. Schulte's submittal as a, as her landscape agreement.
So my question back to staff, then, on that, on that point specifically. Andrew, does that meet condition B from 1998, which reads, submit a final site size and species-specific landscaping plan in accordance with the site plan review regulations?
Probably no.
Okay.
What, what could, what could occur, and perhaps the best way to handle this, would be to, to include as reference the document prepared and submitted by Ms. Schulte this evening? But perhaps the, the motion could be amended to include a condition requiring the applicant to resubmit a final plan for staff's review for consistency with our landscape guidelines. For instance, what we would like to see on a typical landscape plan is the quantity of plants to be planted. Not only that, but the locations. Well, the locations in the graphic presented, I think, meets that intent, and we can count them, but, too, but typically, a legend would have those items in it. That final landscape, we can make and incorporate it into the landscape agreement that gets recorded for future...
Perhaps my original motion was just that we were doing a switch out of Manzanita for Boxwood as part of the overall landscape agreement that they filed, that they, that they submitted, and that it adheres to all applicable...
That's actually, that's actually my question, and I'm a little bit unclear. So there is an existing landscape agreement that was submitted back in 1998 that meets the requirements?
No, the agreement, the word you use, agreement, no, we have no agreement.
Plan, I'm sorry, plan, plan. A plan was submitted.
Yes, and approved in 1998 by the commission.
Okay. And is Ms. Schulte simply suggesting a substitution of the Manzanita for the Boxwood that's in that plan?
It appears from the graphic that she does not wish to plant lawn, and in its place to plant additional Manzanita.
Okay, so we're gonna substitute the species, which is Manzanita for Boxwood, and we're gonna substitute additional Manzanita in place of lawn. So she's, in addition of the sign, which is quite nice, she's requesting those two changes to the plan?
Yes.
Okay. And then, we are not compelled, because I'm trying to make this as simple for her, because I know she came here looking for sign approval, and just a nice modification on the landscaping. We're not compelled to change that plan into a landscaping agreement. That doesn't cause us any, us being the city, any problems if we don't do that, does it? Because she's not in violation with the existing plan, as is. I mean, she could say, you know, I'm happy with the plan, I'm just...
The only violation she has is that the, it is not landscaped as approved today.
Okay, okay. So that, our enforcement would be based upon the plan?
Correct.
Nothing else?
Correct, and then, as you, as you mentioned, as we heard, she wishes to change that plan to more or less reflect what is shown on the graphic that she presented to you.
All right, and I don't want to go down the road of distinguishing a plan from an agreement. At the time that this was approved in 1998, a plan was sufficient, and if I understand your motion, Commissioner, you are allowing a modification, in addition to approval of the sign, you're allowing a modification to the existing approved plan of the Manzanita for Boxwood, and also Manzanita in place of the lawn. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Does that work for staff? That's all right?
Sure.
Okay, great. That's what I'm looking, getting to, yes. All right, we have a motion and a second, additional discussion. Call the question, please.
Member Saragosa?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Member Jubba?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
All right, it's approved. Thank you, good luck to you. It is appealable to the city council if somebody should feel the need to do so, 10 days, I believe, but probably that's not going to happen. Okay. All right, next item on our agenda is item 4.2. This is 9.7, 9.971 Spring Street, the site plan review, Toad Hall, which I have had some fond association in reviewing this project from time to time. This is a six-month site plan review time extension of the 2006, conditional approval of the site plan 0601, Toad Hall. There's a staff report this evening, Andrew?
That'd be me. Cindy Savage, who is the property owner and the applicant back in 2006 for a project located at 971 Spring Street, known as Toad Hall. Ms. Savage is requesting a six-month time extension for the site plan review granted back then. The approved Toad Hall project involves the construction, grading, landscaping, exterior lighting, parking, and signage for an approximately 10,000 square foot, three-story mixed-use building located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Spring and Pleasant Street. Toad Hall would consist of three non-medical first-floor business professional office spaces, one non-medical business professional office space, and two residential spaces on the second floor, with two additional residential spaces on the third floor. Project approvals and environmental findings of exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act date back to December of 2006. Pages two and three of staff's report provide a project history. Under section 1049 of the zoning ordinance, the planning commission may consider a request to extend the approval of a site plan if the applicant makes a request and pays a new fee prior to its expiration. Ms. Savage has submitted a timely extension request, as well as the application fee, and she is in the audience this evening. The commission must consider any changes to the City Code since the approval of the project back in 2006. Some of the commission members who were here last year when Ms. Savage requested a 12-month extension, there was an analysis done on landscaping modifications that were done in relationship to some changes to City Code, but since adoption last year of that extension of 12 months, we have had no changes to the site plan review or City Code relative to this particular project. The applicant would have until, with this six-month extension, the applicant would have until December 19th of this year, which would be the end date, to obtain a construction permit for the building, approved under this site plan review 0601, or the application would then become null and void under section 1049K. After December 19th, if the applicant wished to construct this project, they would have to come back to the planning commission and resubmit for site plan review. Staff posted a public notice for this project and its request tonight on the city's website, its Facebook page, and notified property owners within 500 feet of the site. At the time of the writing, staffers had received one written communication from the public, and as we discussed earlier, there is a comment submitted tonight, who, I believe this person wishes to speak on this item tonight as well. wishes to speak on this item tonight as well. Staff recommends that the Commission grant a six-month extension and taking the suggested actions on, on page, page five of staff's report. Once again, the applicant, Ms. Savage, is in the audience this evening. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Andrew. Thorough report as always. Questions of staff by Commissioners?
If, if the property transfers hands, if there's a sale of this property, does it affect the, this extension?
If the property were to change hands before its expiration, the entitlements would go with that new entity or a new person. So they would be subject to the same conditions of approval. If the transfer happens after the December date I mentioned, then it's null and void, this, this site plan review's null and void. That individual or group would have to resubmit an application.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant, Ms. Savage, to the podium.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can now.
Okay. Good evening to Chair, the Commissioners, and the staff. I'm Cindy Savage, I'm a local resident, and I started this project a long time ago. And then, right at the cusp of the little economic downturn that we've had, the tiny little thing. Anyway, we've, this is my last request for an extension. I gave you an update about a month or so ago. The project is moving ahead, actually looks good. We have, we're still waiting on financing, although that's beginning to come together. And I think we have a, probably a pretty good chance of starting before the December deadline. Can't guarantee it, but it looks really good right now. And this particular project, if you're not familiar with it, is a great project. It was actually a downzoning for that piece of property into both residential and office space. And it was also built as a green concept so that people could live and work in the same space. And I remember, we went over this that many years ago, talking about how it actually will build a stronger city, city core, and it'll bring people into the town that want to both live and work here. So, any questions?
The Chair would note that when we granted your extension in August of 2017, there was a requirement that you make periodic, provide periodic updates, and the Chair would note that that, that has in fact happened, and I'm appreciative of that. Questions of the applicant by staff or by Commissioners?
Just a comment. I know I had made a request that you kind of keep the foliage down, and you have, so I thank you for that. I know it's been maintained and then, not, without expense, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We request you not wander off too far in case we have additional questions.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I, I know that Ms. Vars is probably interested in speaking on this. Anyone else interested in speaking on this issue? Please approach the podium.
My name is Mac. I'm a resident of Placerville, right close to the property. My feeling in looking at this is that this plan is not in keeping with the neighborhood, which is a historic neighborhood, although it does have commercial buildings up the street, it has the, the senior center, sorry about that. It brings a lot of parking spaces to Spring Street. And Spring Street, I don't know if anyone's paid attention of late, is quite a traffic corridor now. And this will add to the amount of traffic that's on Spring Street. I don't think that's a great idea, and I, I don't think that this project is particularly in keeping with the historic nature of that particular area. I know that the economics have changed dramatically, but I think there's a lot more interest now in people buying and building things that are in keeping with the history of the area. So I've talked to a number of my neighbors that live in the area within, and interestingly enough, we did not get any notification about this. They say within 500 feet, that's a pretty small distance, but I talked to people that were within 500 feet and they didn't get any notice. The people that did get notice were my in-laws who live almost three miles out of town. So that's kind of interesting. I don't know why that happened, but. Uh, no, property owners.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll engage staff on that specific point when we bring it back.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if, if staff could just make a brief comment. Staff just wants to, just sort of caution the Planning Commission that this is not a de novo hearing on the project, on the merits of the project, but on the merits of the request.
Correct.
Is there justifiable grounds to extend the entitlement?
Correct. That's the limit of our, our purview this evening is whether or not to grant the extension. Thank you. I agree with that. Thank you very much for that reminder. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this project? On the requ, actually, not on the project, on the request for the extension?
Yes. Mickey Kaiserman, I'm a resident of Placerville. I'm also on the Peak Committee. I'm on Measure H and L Committee. And this is a viable project. You should definitely grant the extension. It will bring housing, needed apartments to downtown Placerville, and it will improve business. It will help the businesses in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishes to speak on this item?
My name is Robin Roers. I own the Seasons Bed and Breakfast that's adjacent to this project. Good evening, Commissioners. I made a mistake on my cover letter that I gave to Andrew. It just mentioned City Council. I meant to say City Council and Commissioners, which is why I gave you 10 copies. And while the intention of tonight is to do another renewal, which has been going on for almost a little over 10 years, this renewal, I have heard the same thing said by Cynthia Savage over and over and over again. And so, I see the sign out there, her real estate sign. I don't see a lot of real estate signs that are on properties for 10 years, okay? And the fact that this project does deserve a look at its merits, even though tonight is not supposed to look at its merits, but it goes towards this renewal of this project. Because, as my cover letter suggests, there's been several accidents. This is a notoriously dangerous, steep hill. The design has ingress and egress, and while you've continued this renewal of her property, there have been continued accidents as a direct result of this steep hill, which is icy, which can be blinding during the sunset, and her ingress and egress is directly right where all the accidents start to happen. And either they go downhill or they go sideways, but I've had five overturned cars inside her property, not off to the side in the gutter, inside her property where a building would rest, where a parked car would rest, where families getting out of their car would rest. And I suggest that even though we're only talking about renewing tonight and not on its merits, I suggest they do intersect greatly. So included in my packet are the 50-plus residents that signed an appeal against this property and with their reasons for it, because it is a family, a quiet family, single-family dwelling environment, historic environment, and this goes against everything. This goes against congestion, parking, and frankly, I'm, and I, I wish you'd reconsider a single family, because I, I think we'd all enjoy that. It's a, it's a big-sized property and it deserves to be utilized in Placerville. There is on the page three, a picture of the fire hazard, because it remains very, very weedy. I lo, I look at it every single day. It was cleaned up just recently because of this meeting. That's not right. It's not right to the neighborhood to have an absentee, absentee property owner like that. And so the picture also shows how it's been notoriously overgrown to the fact that the street signs have been continuously blocked from view. So it's just recently that it just got cleaned up, I would say within the past week to two So I suggest that you look at, I, I included all the previous letters, because I did represent the neighbors that are surrounding it within a, I would say, a six-block radius, that felt that they would be negatively impacted, particularly me, of course, because I have a, a business that relies on quietness. It relies, it relies, and I don't even mind that there would be construction of a single-family home, that would interrupt me greatly. But it's the, it would be the traffic congestion, parking congestion, and then neighbors on second and third floor balconies when I'm trying to conduct a wedding. The Seasons Bed and Breakfast has a lot of tourists, they come to Placerville, they want to enjoy Apple Hill, and they come for the peace. That's my number one, you know, reason that they come. I am afraid that I've also been left off. It, it's previously documented in 2006, left off of letters that went out to me. They went to my mom, they went to some neighbors, but they didn't go to me. So it, it, there needs to be a sufficient update regarding this property in terms of let, notifying people within the surrounding area. And I do note that I would be holding the City Council and all its Commissioners directly responsible in the event of an accident, particularly because I've highlighted it over and over again. The reason I've highlighted it so much is when I hear a crash on the back of my property and go running up there, I got to know what happened. Was it mine? Was it the Shakespeare Club, which I happen to like to protect a little bit, since nobody lives in the Shakespeare Club and they're my neighbor, and it's a historic building? So I'm well aware of the, the way that traffic works. I've tried to videotape them on icy roadways, but.
So Ms. Vars, I.
I think you get my point.
Well, we do appreciate your, your concerns.
Thank you again, and I'll give you one more.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to Commissioners for discussion and possible action. Again, the action this evening is for an extension, the final extension that the project is eligible for, it's a six-month extension. And then, the, the Chair would again simply note, and it's described more than adequately in the staff report, that the length of time involving this project, many of the extensions were granted by council far outside of the normal process because of the very, very difficult economic times that all of us have really have gone through. So it's not that any special favor has been granted for this particular project, it's just the way it's worked out. So discussion by my fellow Commissioners regarding the, the request before us this evening. Commissioner Juba?
So I have a, a question for the applicant. You mentioned that your, the outlook for getting financing for this project is improved, or it is good. Can you clarify whether or not that financing means the sale of the property with the entitlement? Or the financing to actually construct this project?
So, go ahead, come on up something, and just for a newer Commissioner, normally we would ask that question when the applicant, because I've closed the public hearing, I'll reopen the public hearing then at this point, which means if there's anyone in the audience, we would have to open it up for everyone.
My apologies.
Okay, that's all right. Nothing is fatal, so.
It's a good question. I have, I, I've looked for every way possible to make sure that this project happens. I think it's a great project, and I'm so behind it. And I have looked for partners in the project, I've looked for courageous people who want to do this project. I have found people that were interested in it. They find the project for Placerville too small, and they, it's not a big enough project and it's not a small enough project. And so I've been through over and over lots of different ways that we could do it. So what was your question again?
You made reference to financing. Can you clarify if that financing is for the sale of the property?
Right now, the financing, I have come to the conclusion that to get this building built, I'm going to need to do it. And so the financing that I have that looks more solid right now than it, it has is, is financing that is already placed someplace else. I'm waiting for that project to end, so that money will be then open possibly to do this project. Can't guarantee that it's going to happen, but it looks like there'll be financing available.
Thank you.
Perhaps based upon your description, instead of Toad Hall, you would call it Goldilocks?
You have to read the story of Toad Hall.
While we have Ms. Savage at the podium, any other questions? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Again, thank you. And I overheard Andrew that perhaps I didn't need to reopen the public hearing for that, that we could have additional questions of the applicant specifically without reopening the public hearing?
Staff will seek legal advice on that particular issue. In my, in my experience, a decision-making body does have an ability to ask an applicant of, of questions, and it didn't open the public hearing.
Okay.
But maybe it does, that's what we were, staff was discussing, but I will, I will seek legal counsel on that on, and, and report back at our next meeting.
Inquiring Chairs need to know. All right, so we have it before us. Sentiment? Motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt the, adopt the staff report. Let me flip back here to make sure I get the, all the details in.
Page five.
Adopt, adopt the staff report and make the findings of fact listed in section two, and then section three, grant the six-month extension, ending December 19th, 2018, for this project as described, Site Plan Review 06-01-E, Toad Hall.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. We have discussion. The Chair would ask if we want, as we have had, and the applicant has complied with, if we want a report at, at three months between now and December, or if we simply want to allow the six months to go and, and see what happens?
I, I'm in favor of just letting the six-month time period play out.
And your motion would support that?
My.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if she so wants to, if we have good news and she wants to share it with us beforehand, great.
Yeah, I agree with that. If, Ms. Savage, if you would like to report back to us, that, that would be great news.
And I would simply encourage you to remain sensitive to the needs of the neighbors with regards to accumulation of trash and other things, attractive nuisance issues and, and that sort of thing, and the vegetation, and as, as you move forward, and perhaps the coming months will, they're going to be telling one way or the other, so hopefully it'll be a positive thing. Is there, if there's no other discussion, I'll call the question?
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Member Juba?
Aye.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Member Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you. Is this, this motion's not appealable?
Yes, all actions are appealable.
This is, this, this is.
It is an action item, yes.
This action item is appealable to the City Council 10 days. All right, that brings us then to item 5.1, a discussion of amendment to Article 7D of the Planning Commission bylaws. This item was tabled from the June 19th, regular meeting due to the absence of Member Juba. We're happy to have him back. And Pierre, is this your report? Or Andrew, you have this report, I guess?
Yeah, it's very brief. It's one page. I basically state what the proposed amendment to the bylaws under Article 7D, as in David. The gist of the request invol, or the amendment basically involves a quorum, and when does a quorum stop becoming a quorum? So it, when the item's announced and there's a quorum, does that quorum? So it, when the item's announced, and there's a quorum, does that quorum stay in effect, even though maybe a member or two, because of illness, or an emergency, or they've gotta go and leave? How does that affect the quorum? Well, the, our legal counsel, the city attorney, basically states that, at any time during the meeting, if there fail to, fail to be a majority of the members, membership seated here, if there are only two members here, then we cannot conduct business at all. The next item of business would be to adjourn. So if something were to happen where, let's say we had two absences, and there were three members here, and at some point during the discussion of an action item, we had a member who had to leave before action was taken, well, that item would have to stop. We could not further discuss, analyze, or even make a decision on that item.
The scenario being, presume we had four members, one member has to leave, but another member has to recuse themselves. So now we still have three members present. We, we don't have a quorum, but my understanding is, from, from council's letter, is that we don't lose the quorum in that case?
A recusal means you leave the room, so you are not present. An abstention, abstention is different.
So, or if you, but you have a, have a conflict, I cannot vote on this item because of a conflict?
Then you would leave the room and not be part of the discussion.
And that's considered having left the meeting, for all intents and purposes?
Yes. An abstention would be where you just don't say yea or nay to the motion.
Right, I won't permit that, by the way. It's not allowed.
You are physically here, present, but you just did not vote.
Sure, okay, all right, fair enough, I'm not trying to complicate anything. For some reason it came up, I thought it came up when Commissioner Ogden, Carol Ann Ogden, was on the commission. It seemed like we had a situation come up. All right, so no actions, I'm sorry. Mr. Keeney, you have a comment or a question?
Could you still take public comment? If we got to the situation that was described, we had three members, one member had to recuse themselves, would we still take public comment?
I think what we heard this evening by, by the Director, that when an action, or an item on the agenda is announced, even when it's determined that we don't have a quorum, or actually if the quorum was, if we failed to have a quorum after it was announced, then there might have been an opportunity for public comment anyway, but yes, there would be an opportunity to hold public comment, with the exception of, if there are only two members here, then the next action would be to leave. We can't hold any meeting, we can't discuss, we can't, we can't do anything.
Adjourn.
We have to adjourn, yeah, thank you, that's the word.
You're compelled, you're compelled to...
We're compelled to adjourn.
If we, if we started with, if we got down to two people left, then there were two, hmm, okay, we're compelled to adjourn, interesting, okay. Hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, I think we just cannot conduct business, I think that's, that's really the language that's...
Okay, hold on, okay, but let's go back, we start, maybe this, we start with three, one person is recused, so we aren't compelled to adjourn, we still have the three people, we just can't take action on that item, right? So, we can't take action on that item, but we would still engage, have the public comment. I would, I would think we would still want the public comment, they showed up for an item when it was agendized. I think, based upon what council gave us earlier, we would still open it up for public testimony or comment, and so those would get, go into the record, okay, even though we weren't taking any action on it. I think that's what you'd have to do.
Perhaps the Chair at the time could, could weigh in by stating to the public that we can't make a decision on this action item tonight, but as referenced earlier, there are people that have showed up to the meeting this evening, and they wish to be heard, and we could put that on the record, they could submit comments to us, but, but I don't think action could take place.
Right, we would not be able to take action, that, that's clear, right? I think the issue of, going to your question specifically, is would we still open up the public hearing for anyone who wanted to address the matter, since it is on the agenda? And I'm of the opinion now, based on what council gave us, we'd have to do that, so I don't think there's any harm in doing that. Okay, I'm not trying to run up our bill with council. No action required, right?
No, it's just, it's an informational item, getting back to your, the commission's request for legal counsel to consider and review the changes.
And the bylaws are correct as, as to this language?
The bylaws are correct to this language, I'm not following the...
Well, the bylaws don't require a change. The bylaws are consistent with the, with the opinion of council.
That I cannot answer.
All right.
I don't know his opinion on that particular question.
Great, we can dispense with that. All right, that brings us to Items, any other comments before we go into Item Six? All right, we're gonna, Item 6.1, matters from Commissioners, any Commissioners have matters to bring to staff under the public? Okay, seeing none, I don't think we have to have public comment if there is nothing that's reported. 6.2, matters from staff.
Staff has a couple of things to bring up tonight. The item that was heard at the last meeting, the nine, at 948 Oak Terrace Road, the variance 18-01, that item, after discussion with the city's legal counsel, there is a provision under the Planning Commission bylaws, that when an action item fails to receive the affirmative votes of a majority of the quorum present, and in this case, there were only, there was a two-to-two vote, so there was no action technically taken on that item, because it was an action item. What happens then, there's another provision under the bylaws that would require that action item to automatically be forwarded to City Council. So that's what will take place on August the 28th.
Okay.
It's basically, since no action was taken here, there's no recommended action by, by the membership here, they will, they will get the staff report that came to you, and council will have a, an option to approve, deny, or, or request additional information. So that's the first item. National Night Out is August the 7th, which corresponds traditionally on our first meeting, regular meeting date of August. Historically, and Chair Friend can, can echo this, we have often not held meetings on this date. I can think of a few exceptions, when we had a workload where we needed to get through stuff. At this point, we have no action items for your discussion that evening, so we will, we suggest canceling that meeting. The next regular meeting would be August 21st, and we will have a minimum of two items, public hearing items on that agenda.
So I would offer that if you send us an agenda for the meeting, we will be here, and if you don't, then we won't. How's that?
Okay.
Any objection to that approach? Okay.
Director Rebus, do you have any, any items you want to report?
Just briefly, I just want to report that staff did have, staff had a discussion with the project proponents for what is, again, now the Hampton Inn and Suites, to be constructed at Jake Wayne and Smith Flat Area, and they are still doing a lot of number crunching, but they still are looking like they're attempting to move forward. And then staff also had a meeting with the project proponents for what we just call the Fornie Road Hotel Site, and that's the one that's just below the hillside there, south of Highway 50, below the In-N-Out Burger and the Office Max, and it looks like there is some movement on that particular hotel project, so we're hopeful that maybe if we're lucky, we'll go in not just one, but two hotels.
That's terrific, that's great. Is there anyone in the, in the vast audience that would like to speak on any of the items under 6.2? Thank you. And then we'll move on to Item Seven, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No need.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Thank you, everyone.